Agree that belongs to this property. And when you guys stop telling me that I'm doing something illegal and agree to work with me, there's things we can do to remediate that property and make it more attractive.
This is what the process right now, we're giving you an opportunity.
Well, I'm not, no.
Could you mark which vehicles you can dispose of? Can you do something with the white metal washing machines or refrigerators, freezers that are piled up in there? What, why do we collect those?
Because you charged me to bring them in the yard. And if I put them in my trailer and take it to Vegas, I get paid for them.
Okay, so could you give us a date you're gonna do that?
I usually, once there's a trailer full, so no, I don't have a date. I do have, I do have solutions. But I'm not gonna agree to do anything as long as you tell me it's illegal. I, since I bought that yard, I've cleaned it up drastically. I put a fence along the side, uh, street, which by the way, I've talked to the city about the street draining into my property causing erosion. One of two properties that I had that issue with. But your water rips right through my property and it floods me out. But, you know, I can take that metal and move it around the corner. That's labor, okay? That costs money. Have you tried finding labor lately, even at fifteen, twenty dollars an hour? Okay? I can't do it myself. I, I won't get, I can do those things. I'm not willing to do anything if you tell me what I'm doing is illegal.
Why did you put the fence up?
Why did I put the fence up? Cause I was trying to create more privacy on my property.
Privacy or hiding?
I don't need to hide anything. I'm not doing anything illegal. I'll take it back down. I'm not doing anything illegal. I don't agree with you. Do what you gotta do if you don't agree with me. Okay? I'm, I'm extremely pissed off that the attorney couldn't call and cancel the meeting, which I specifically rushed back to town for. Okay? That's not right. That's not professional. That's disrespectful.
And so I just think that someone had relayed a message to him. My indication was that the city attorney, from past conversations, um, should not be having those conversations. It's come to the city council. And past meetings caused a lot of issues in those meetings. And so, um, I asked for a message relayed to you. If you did not receive it, I apologize. But there was, my stance is there's no reason for the city attorney to be meeting in these, it comes to the city council. Um, any conversations or results we've seen have caused some member issues in the past. And so that's my position, is I, I don't do those meetings. And so, on that setup, I, I asked for a message relayed. And I suppose I didn't apologize for that.
Well, I appreciate it. I just, all I was doing was too simple. Cause when you talk to Jennifer Lee, it always dances around a circle and you never get a straight answer. Thank you. So, if you feel what I'm doing is illegal, then take your next step. I'll get my attorney and we'll, we'll go argue it out. But no, it's not illegal. How many other yards in town are you forcing to do the same thing? I put that fence up as a courtesy. If it's offending you, I'll remove it. And I can use this in one of my houses.
I think the fence is nice, but from people I talked that live on South Street, said that was a welcome sight because it was ugly looking in your yard. That's what I was told.
Many yards in town are ugly.
Okay, and you, if you're aware, you can find that, a, a, a property you have a complaint, you go to City Hall and fill a complaint form out. That's how this all gets started. That's the process. You want to complain, fill a paper out, and it'll go through the process. We have a process to do that.
I don't need to complain about anybody else. I'll turn around and business like they are and try to be respectful to them.
So, for clarity and for the sake of, um, making sure we're continuing on with this, what's under consideration on this item? Is for the council to approve either some action or no action on this?
So the council can order abatement, um, by the city. So order the city to do abatement, um, have a cost recouped from the owner. Um, more time can be granted. If the owner needs more time, the time can be told and additional time be given or not do an order for abatement.
So you're gonna get rid of cars that I don't own?
And that is an issue. If the cars don't have title, we cannot take them to the landfill. And we would have to find a place to store vehicles that would be removed from.
Well, and we've been in that, the city's been in that position before. Where they've seen a car off a vacant property without a title and we're just about trying to figure.
I'm not in a vacant landfill.
Right. We'd be in the same position, Mr. Tristan.
If there's no place to take them.
So, I mean, cars aside, he does acknowledge that there's scrap metal accumulating, um, that you have a plan for. Um, so I, I think the best route is at least for you to either execute that plan or take them to the landfill. I mean, that, those are your two options.
Okay. Why can't I store them around the corner where it's not, uh, in a line of sight? It's still a commercial property. I'm staging material from my businesses. Why would you buy a commercial property at a premium if you can't stage material around your operations?
Do you have any information on that?
So we worked out it and it wasn't zone, was it Mike that I talked to? Um, or did I talk to anybody about the zoning?
Yes, yeah.
And it wasn't zone commercial.
Yeah, it's zoned MH three, which includes all the permitted uses for C one, two, and three.
That's commercial.
Heavy commercial. You can do anything.
I'd have to look back on the notes. I don't recall the, the notes on the, the commercial. But there was, I don't recall that conversation. So I'd have to look back in my notes regarding the, the commercial aspects. But I do recall that there was an issue or a finding that we felt that we could proceed forward on this property. But I, I would need to look back at my notes.
If you look at the zoning, there's different types of businesses that handle metal. And, and that particular lot isn't any of those businesses. But I would recommend that the council work with Mr. Tristan where he's here and.
One other thing on the ordinance is, is we want people, residents, tourists coming through town, to see our town as a, as a beautiful sight. And if there's a way for him outside out of mind, when you drive down the main street and you look all over, what do you see? Huge pile of tires, whole perimeter surrounded by cars, right in the middle of a big pile of white metal. The people on South Street were happy you put the fence up. So he needs to work with us. I don't know where he's gonna push all this stuff to, but you got all these cars, flat tires that sit right in the ordinance if their tires are flat and parts are disarrayed. Well, you've got to draw a line in the sand. He's willing to work with us, but he's gotta do something on a timely matter. Do you agree? You go down the main street, you can look, what do you look in your backyard? What do you see?
I don't disagree. I just, I'm offended by you telling me that what I'm doing is against the law. The tires are building. That's what I've been told. The tires are building material that I'm using to build a retaining wall to try to cut back on erosion of my property. You might call it waste. I call it building material. Look it up on the EPA, it's totally illegal. I've gotten, I went through it with a building official prior to his departure. I, I got, I followed all those steps. I get offended when I'm treated like shit and I'm harassed.
But you're, but you're, how far have you progressed with your, your wall?
I apologize.
How far about your wall?
I done, right behind my, uh, pit where, where the dump is, I, I dumped probably sixty, seventy feet. I need to do the site where the side street is because that's where my biggest drop off is. So I need to do a couple of steps there. I, I need a minimum of ninety days to move the stuff out of there. I like to get it around the corner out of sight and I can slowly build a wall.
So the options under consideration for the council are grant more time with the plan, order abatement by the city, or, or no action. Is that correct, Shane?
Yes. He's willing to do it ninety days, put it in the minutes. We'll have our public works director person go up there, take a picture from numerous angles, and we'll compare it ninety days.
Now, let's clarify what I'm gonna do, please. Okay? It's moving the tires and the white metal. The cars are wrecked. I'll take them around the corner out of sight. But the other cars are there. Those are support, probably about ten or twelve of them are from Cruze. That's supporting my business. Okay? The ones that I don't have title to, I'll contact the recycler again. But twice I've talked to him, I thought I was gonna get him. And unfortunately, Greg got in front of me, cause he had more cars. So he was able to get him to do his before he got to mine, and I lost out. But I have talked to that gentleman from Utah.
I would make a motion to approve the extended amount of time of ninety days for you to, to get your, your, uh, your property cleaned up and moved to where, you know, it's not quite as visible.
Okay.
Second, that. Motion from Councilwoman Beecher, second from Councilwoman Spear. Any further discussion on the site?
I did find a reference to the M two. Um, so just the, the reference is City Ordinance twelve dash nine dash three regarding M two heavy manufacturing district. The heavy manufacturing zone will be characterized by the location of open and closed manufacturing, processing, assembly uses, which may potentially create hazards, nuisance, or disturbances. Some peripheral landscaping will be provided where appropriate to reduce the effects of detrimental care for incidents of permitted uses. And so it has to be, um, products that are permitted within the business. So, does your business use metals for those things? I think that was one of the issues, that your business doesn't require use metals.
Well, wait a minute. I, I bought that yard to support my business and I own eighty doors in town. So part of my business is all refrigerators, all dishwashers, washers and dryers.
Okay. And so that was the, the background behind it, is that the, anything there has to be a permitted use of the business. And then peripheral landscaping, um, can be required to reduce detrimental care for it. And so that's the basis going forward. Um, but it sounds like we have a, a, a motion, a resolution. I just wanted to get that information to you.
I mean, sixty percent of the stuff that's in that yard was there when I bought it. And it was actually worse. I've cleaned it up three times. Last year, when I was given the opportunity to go and get rid of the metal and go charge, I took it to the landfill. But if I have to pay, I'm gonna stage it and take it to Las Vegas. I'll start putting it around the corner out of sight. But it's supporting my businesses.
So, so you're suggesting that the city had, take your metal to the landfill day for free, you'd get it all out there to the landfill?
I did.
Now, would you do that again?
I would. Absolutely. And it looks like it's in Jersey.
But if we did that, you're taking it to Vegas, you gotta pay for it in Vegas. Why would you?
No, I don't pay for it in Vegas. I get paid in Vegas. I get thirty dollars a refrigerator and, and whatever the penny says for the metal. The metal's not worth a bunch. But every refrigerator here is twenty bucks. I paid. Vegas, they paid me thirty.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second for an extension of the time.
You'll be able to do ninety days. Let's be honest with that.
I, if there's an issue, I'll come back. But I don't believe that I, I should be able to get it done in ninety days.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any input? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Item twelve, Councilmember City Attorney Man, while a discussion for possible action and approval of abatement, uh, abatement action to approve the removal of excessive woodwork and debris on private property located at twenty-one fifty Ruby Street, Epi Nevada, APN zero zero one dash zero three six dash one zero.
That's somebody else's property. I'm sorry. John, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Um, I, I took a look at this one today too. And, uh, it's interesting to say, at least there is a lot of debris. Um, some of which perhaps someone would characterize as decor. Um, that I don't know. So I, what my question is, I guess, is how do we determine what would be allowed in the way of decor and what is going to be termed debris?
You're asking the difference between trash and treasure.
I, I suppose that is my question.
Is, is the property owner for this not a person here?
No.
Okay.
Extensive woodwork, you can see that.
Sure, yeah.
You know, that's a clean, it's treasure, it's a neighbor's bed. It's about that deep. The decor is, uh, maybe a plumber out there, but, and, you know, the, the fact that I, you know, we need to, somebody needs to dig it out. Just gonna take the back hole, extend the boom to drag it out.
The woodwork?
The woodwork, yeah.
Well, and this was an issue, not this, uh, the one we treated last meeting with the, um, sawdust and.
It's the same.
It's the same one. Okay. That's what, that makes sense. Um, but the, the, the fire issue there, I think is the, um, is the main concern.
You know, the individual stated that they'd use it for flood control, let it just wash away. But the question I'd have to the sheriff's here, if the city was going there and baiting that, we gonna have to have a guard?
Uh, I know there's always an issue of sending city staff onto private property. What's our, what's our authority here? How does that work?
And so, um, as, as I saw these coming up on the agenda, understanding that abatement orders would likely be issued, the concern was the safety of staff entering on the private property to do removals. I did talk to the sheriff this morning and indicated with an, with an order from the council, he'd be willing to have a sheriff on standby. Is that correct, my understanding from our conversation?
Yeah, thank you for letting me speak. As long as we have a judge's order, that gives us the authority to go in there and say, city staff will be more glad of this. Would we, would we need a court order?
How does that, how does that get spent?
Um, so I need to, to double check if the municipal court is able to issue that order. But if so, I can, can file an seat for an order from the judge from the municipal court. I, I believe he has the authority to do so, but I'll check and ensure that that does.
Okay. So once again, the options for the council to consideration on this item are order of abatement, grant more time, or no action?
And for this, I did want to indicate, so, um, Councilwoman Beecher's question, we just have to look to the, to the ordinance and make our best effort to, to define rubbish. Look this with fondly. And rubbish has a number of, um, things listed. Non-pretentious solid waste consisting of both combustible and non-combustible waste, such as paper, wrapping, cigarettes, cardboard, tin cans, yard clippings, leaves, wood, glass, bedding, crockery, metals. And so city staff would have to just seek their, um, use their discretion in enforcing what the ordinance indicates in the definition of rubbish. This, um, I did receive, um, from, from Mr. Kretkraft, an estimate of what the abatement cost would be. His estimate is just over two thousand dollars, two thousand fifty-four dollars and eight cents. With the use of a backhoe, bobcat, and dump truck, as well as a, an equipment operator, hours and service worker, hours, so his best estimates is approximately two thousand dollars to an abatement.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council on the side?
Make a motion to move forward with the abatement.
Motion from Councilwoman Alder.
Oh, second.
Second from Councilman Carson. Um, and moving forward, that's you contacting the court. Motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the side? Hearing our call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any input? Uh, item thirteen, Councilmember City Attorney Man, while a discussion for possible action and approval of abatement action to approve the removal of junk abandoned vehicles meets debris on private property located at two oh one Ogden Avenue in Epi Nevada, APN zero zero one dash one two five dash zero six.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's my, uh, actually, a couple of years ago, I had some pretty severe medical problems and I lost my business. Some people from Chicago, they're trying to, they come here and spend money to help us rehabilitate that building there. There, we got some, uh, 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 offers from White Pine Glass on replacing all the doors with safer doors. So the people would have to go buy in and that. And, uh, they're going to invest a lot of money in that building, property. They purchased that building for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars from the motor trust. They never put one penny into that building. Between Tom Bass and myself, we put a half a million dollars in that building. So it hasn't, it's gone through a lot of, uh, uh, restoration by us. And that's just the beginning, cause it is a sound building. But the, uh, all the vehicles that were in the back, they were from dead people. I couldn't get rid of them. DMV wouldn't let us even look at them. And, uh, and, you know, get rid of them. Um, uh, five of those, uh, eight, eight, uh, vehicles were Tom Bass because the titles were given to him. Did nothing with them over the years. And there was nothing I could do. I felt very frustrated. And, uh, but recently, we did get rid of three, three of the vehicles for the people that were putting them there. And the only reason some of those vehicles are there is cause some people had hardships in that neighborhood and we were just helping them out. One guy's got cancer, another guy's got Alzheimer's, I did, for example. And we were just being kind to them. And none of those, none of those vehicles are ours. But they're not junk. All you gotta do is put a battery on them and they'll run. So I mean, it's not like we're running a junkyard or something back there. Now, I don't, the, the city wasn't very specific on what they expected of us as regard to the weeds and so, and so forth. But there really isn't any debris back there. Um, and, you know, and the weeds basically keep the dust out. That's about it. You know, it's, uh, and to be honest with you, I hired two people. One got attacked over here at the Prospector, got his jaw broken in two places. It's kinda hard to work with that. And then another, another one had a mental breakdown. So it's, it's hard to get good help here, even when you pay out the money. And, uh, and things, and crazy things like that happen. I don't know. I don't, I can't explain it. But anyway, uh, we wanna run a, a really nice business there. The people from Chicago are coming out about a week to see what's going on here with the, uh, abatement and all this. We just wanted to know what's expected of us with this abatement. Uh, you know, right now, we're trying to run a business on a, on a very limited budget. I, I'm not taking a salary. I'm like President Trump. I'm trying to bring money to this town and put people to work. I know that sounds like idealistic, but that's, that's me. And so, and, uh, I can live on very little. But, um, uh, we just wanna know what to expect. And I'd like to have my two letters sent in and reply as part of the record. So, uh, enter as part of the record. Um, you know, as we are trying to do our best here, but we're, but, uh, you know, it's like we're getting the bums rushed. You know, thirty days is not enough time to get rid of a bunch of vehicles that the DMV does. They wanna give us a title to. You know, and they've, and they've been fighting us for thirteen years on a couple of those vehicles. Where the guy died, by the way, from smoking marijuana. And, um, and his relatives parked it on our property. And we haven't been able to get rid of him since. Even when they gave us a letter stating that they, that those vehicles were our property, the DMV wouldn't move. People down there are gonna be very discouraged, probably.
Yes, well, now, Mr. Peeler, if you wanna provide those letters to the clerk, she can get those entered into the record.
Uh, I already did, so.
Okay.
Well, I have no.
Uh, really?
Yeah.
Well, I've got you to make a copy of this.
I received one letter, my apologies, I don't have one of them.
That's one of them, yeah.
Would you like to know? You didn't put it in the record.
Uh, you, you can.
Do you like your records?
I got two of them. Or you can just put it in there. It's just, it doesn't make a difference. Just so it's part of the record. Uh, we are trying to bring money to this town and we're trying to think, uh, put people to work. But it seems like every time we do that, something crazy happens. Like that guy got his jaw broken at the Prospector.
So vehicles aside, um, there, there are several broken signs, it appears.
Well, that's from, that's from Tom Bass.
Sure. Regardless of where it's from, they're, they're there, as well as it's very overrun with weeds.
Yeah, it is.
So I, I mean, perhaps that's what we need, is a plan.
We could best try and remove those signs and take it to the junkyard or wherever. I got rid of three hundred and something pounds of aluminum. Um, I probably gave it away to J and M.
So I, I think that's what we need, is a plan for you as to how, how long this is going to take.
Well, I don't know. I've been trying. You know, you can tell from the letters. I've been trying to get Tom, we have to do something since two thousand.
Okay, but he's not an owner of the property anymore, correct? So if he, if they're his and they're, it's been there for thirty days, it's abandoned, correct?
Yeah, anybody that knows Tom knows that if he doesn't wanna move something, it's not gonna move.
Okay, so now it's, now it's the responsibility of the property owners.
Well, that's why I'm coming out from Chicago. I'm coming out to take a look and see what we can do by cleaning up everything.
So when, when are they gonna be here, Jim, to Chicago?
About a week from today.
Okay, so you're gonna give us, for, for example, you know, if they're gonna be here, they're gonna make a decision. They're gonna say, this looks like heck. One of the things disturbs people is we have a museum. Pull up the museum, look across the street, what do you see?
One, I know.
Okay, and you know, but Tom's got equipment. Somebody's got, you can hire somebody and scrape the weeds out of there.
You did that once.
And then those vehicles, the ones you're gonna save that got titles on it or whatever, ordinance says they gotta have, they can't be sitting there with flat tires.
I know.
You know, you know. So you, you know what has to happen, so you just let it happen. You know, your business is important, but it's not the Nevada Avenue side. That, that side back there has nothing to do with your business. But the Nevada Avenue side, you got trees growing into your building. And like Councilwoman Beecher says, there's a motel sign that don't even belong there. So your, and your company's got an issue with this, it's gotta be corrected now.
Well, I've, uh, frankly, we begged them to take those things away. They're doing what they want, but, uh, so far we haven't had any compliance.
So it sounds like what we need maybe is to table this to the next meeting, to give you a chance to meet with your property owners, to find out a timeline as to, as to when this could all happen.
Well, I'm gonna meet with Tom Bass too. And like I said, we did get rid of three, three, um, vehicles so far.
Sure, so.
Would you be prepared for a plan at the next meeting, I guess, is the question?
Oh, yeah, I think so. And what is that, about a week from there?
That would be.
June, ten.
June, thirty. Due to the property owners, the letter that the, the city sends to say, this is what I'm up against. Help me.
Well, I'm trying to get these people to, everybody to see the point here, you know.
Are they with the mafia?
Believe it or not, uh, yeah, I mean.
In the interest of me to expedite this, I would make a motion to change this for the next meeting when Mr. Peeler will be back with a plan.
Okay. We have a motion. Uh, is that amenable to Mr. Peeler?
Yeah, that's fine.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Yeah, we're trying to be good citizens.
Um, motion from Councilwoman Beecher, second from Councilwoman Alder. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any input? Very sore. Thank you, Mr. Peeler. With that, we move on to item nine, public comment.
We are also trying to see major improvements in that building. We want to solve that.
Thank you. If there's any sort of comment, please state it for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Mayor, I've had to receive a permit application so that I command my properties to RVs as others do. You're discriminating against me and my family. On numerous occasions, I have asked for a complete list of properties that you have permitted and approved. The city has RVs parked on the streets, single lots, next to homes, and connected to power. Are you doing that for utilities, as you did me? No, you're not. We're selecting it for us to go on. That needs to stop. You ask for complaints. I don't like pointing a finger at anybody, but I've come before you and I've given you pictures and the folks have done nothing. I can move a little faster on my properties, but I don't have any income in the income coming in if you folks won't allow me to do as others do. Now, uh, I'm gonna take that property out in six ninety-two unless I'm told different, and it's over. After that, I can't do anything until I find a contractor at the motel to take down that, uh, little fiber board. The rest of it's gonna be painted. It's just asphalt shingles, black, I'll paint it orange, just like Tom Bass did with the, uh, uh, the Silver State on Main Street. But I gotta have a contractor. If I don't have to have a contractor, I've got plenty of, uh, handyman. And I can do that much faster. But I'm running up against a problem. And I showed you the two bits I got from roofers. I'm gonna pay nine thousand dollars more? Absolutely not. And you can't force me to pay that kind of money. I'm willing to do it, but if I can't find anybody, I need additional time. I thought I could have it done because I thought if Weaver didn't come around this time, JCR, he says I'll be there in a week. But the man has other problems and the other contractors are too busy. Now, I've got pictures. And again, you folks are coming after me. Let me tell you, I won't stand the discrimination, period. For years, I remember going to the planning commission when planning commission members brought this out. You guys haven't done anything. And yet you come after me. On, uh, certain areas, yeah, they're fenced, but the zoning is the same as mine. You've got RVs, you've got, uh, old, uh, school buses, you've got, uh, derrida cars, no tires. I'm all for cleaning up, but I need to make some money. And you guys aren't allowing me to do that. I've asked you in the past if you, uh, addressed this, Epi City co-violations of members of planning commission as well as city councilmen, some, uh, county commissioners. You guys done nothing. And yet you want me to move forward? Let me do business like everybody else? Here's RVs throughout the community. Okay. I won't pay a permit. Give it to me. You're not doing that. Down here by the BMX, they're not zoned for that. Here's another one, uh, just off Ogden Avenue.
Thank you, George.
There's some virtual properties.
Um, Maryetta Henry of mine has some comments.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Maryetta.
Mayor Robson and the members of the city council. I'd like to read a letter to you that, uh, the White Pine Horse Race is receiving in Nevada Game Control Board. Pursuant to NRS four sixty-three dot three twenty, subsection two C, you will not be receiving monthly distributions for calendar year 2021 as you did not tax on permit toll wagering per NRS four sixty-six dot one twenty-five for the calendar year 2020. Do you have any questions? You can take it up with the Nevada Game Control Board Tax and License Division. I'd like to respectfully request that you consider putting White Pine Horse Races... on your list of agencies to be considered for funding under CARES Act. Um, my understanding is CARES Act has to do with COVID. And because of COVID, we've been penalized for not racing and therefore we cannot get this funded. Um, the usual funding we get.